That's a high priority, but we also need to ensure that we have the proper legal structure in place. We need to ensure that we have proper ordinances on Sanibel. And to the extent we need changes in state laws dealing with poaching, then we need to approach our local delegation and sell them on that idea, be willing to go along with that. We need to do that.
Thanks, Mike. Jason?
You know what? I concur with just about everything everybody said here, but I find myself as a person who's interested in policy looking at this a different way. Have we inadvertently created a market where a turtle that we were up to our ears in now has a value where before it was generally for kids? Used to be able to go out to Ortes Avenue to the flea market and get a big handful of red-eared sliders or box turtles or whatever for your terrarium, and you just don't find those things anymore. I'm a great believer in that I'd rather have children, if they want to have pets, and learn about on a day-to-day basis, looking after and being responsible for wildlife, encouraging native wildlife, encouraging things that if it escapes out the back door will do perfectly well on Sanibel. I do not until it gets the size to beat the dog, and then setting that loose. So I'd have to look at the other side as well and say, do we need to encourage native species as children's pets so they are more generally available and the market dries up?
John?
I agree with the education component in respect to educating the landscapers. But the assumption is that a lot of the turtles that are being gathered and poached are landscape. It's kind of animal, and they take it, stick it in the bucket when they go off the island. I gotta believe if they knew this was against the law, or certainly if their employers knew they could be in legal trouble if they continued to do that, if they did that, then that's one thing. I don't, and we ought to enforce that to the highest degree and work with state officials to prosecute where we see that kind of issue. I don't know that we's running around town at night with flashlights, guys going into the woods looking for animals. If that's the case, then we need a different set of rules around stopping that.
Thank you, John. So now back to some more specific questions for each of you, and you'll have two minutes to respond to these questions. Recent forum discussion about Captiva potentially hooking up to Sanibel sewer system. You can't allow Captiva coming on the sewer system to be an impetus for development or redevelopment, or increase of density in any form on Captiva. So as a city council member, how would you ensure that Captiva would be legally bound not to overdevelop?
Well, that's an interesting question, and I think it will probably be a difficult proposition. Understand that Captiva is unincorporated part of Lee County. We probably have to achieve that with some type of ordinance or other legal provision. We'd probably also have to do it contractually. I mean, it's pretty tough to close loopholes, but it's very important that we do that because we don't want to increase the density, don't want to increase the possibility of additional traffic on Sanibel and additional capacity in the sewer system if we allow development to reoccur. We certainly don't want the septic tanks to reoccur. So it'll be a difficult process. I don't have a solid answer on how to do that, Ryan.
Thanks, Mike.
I was gonna call you out on that.
I'm calling myself out as I see you, so forgive me. Please have a minute to tell us.
Not a problem. So I was surprised about the whole poaching of box turtles, as everybody else was, but I think we need to kind of look at it a little bit more broadly. It's not just the box turtles that we like on this island. There's all kinds of animals that we like. So I think a broad, you cannot remove animals from this island would be great, because if they like box turtles, what's the next animal that they're gonna like, et cetera? So it really needs to be a broad, straight-across-the-board ordinance saying you cannot remove wildlife from this island. We've got to have some place, right? Why doesn't it extend to land-based as well, and just no animals can leave this island?
Thanks so much. Sorry for skipping you.
No worries.
Scott? Lake Okochobee flows south, but 50% of our issues come from the watershed. So what would you do on city councils to implement projects and policies to address these watershed issues?
That's a great question, and a lot of it is. We're fortunate that Kevin Ruane has moved on and is not only on the Lee County Board of Commissioners, but he's the head of it. And that's really important for Sanibel, I think. As I mentioned earlier, there are 100,000 septic tanks in Lee County. That's a big problem. There are about 2 million in the state of Florida. They are contributing to the. On the river in North Fort Myers, and his septic tank is functioning properly, or according to. Located about 100 feet from the river, and the elevation of his property is about 2 feet above the level of the river. Is going to be solved slowly and gradually, and be something that's gonna be solved quickly. I think we also need to look at the. If you drive down Route 80, there are new subdivisions there every day, and things slowed down a lot during the Great Recession, but it's picked right back up again. So eastern Lee County is developing, and. That, and in particular, make sure that new septic tanks aren't installed, and. Should have to convert to sewer, or sewers should be extended to those areas.
Thanks, Scott. So Mary, you referenced solar panels in past events and mentioned that you want to, quote, "make the island." End, that the city, quote, "that the city should be at the forefront of solar adoption." So as a city council member, would you support incentives for businesses and residents? If so, what type?
Yeah, I think moving forward into the future is very important on the island. Again, it's gonna come down to educating our residents, maybe if they're going to be putting new roofs on, maybe if they're going to be doing an extensive remodel project. They need to know that being energy efficient is not scary. And I know it's very not cost-effective right now, but as we move forward and more people would start to consider it, the price will go extremely down. Even when we're building new homes and new buildings on the island, I think that maybe we should have at our, in the building department and the planning department, a brochure on how to make your home more energy efficient, you know? I think the city could start if they start to remodel. A lot of cities do use solar energy for their whole-city environment. So yeah, moving towards the future, I think it's really important that people start looking into some kind of solar energy.
Thanks, Mary. I appreciate it.
But just to say, windmills will not work on Sanibel. Just wanna put that out because we don't want to be destroying our bird population, okay?
Yes. All right, Tim. Your recent campaign flyer mentions that, quote, "The Sanibel Plan has been the city's guide since 1976. Thoughtful future modifications will keep us on course," end quote. What modifications do you have in mind?
Well, I think it's just a matter of continuing to adapt it into our current world. That was 40 years ago, you know, when half of the development on the island, we've only had half of the development on the island. Now we're to a point, again, where we're almost that build-out. So we just need to ensure that we continue to follow that plan even as we go forward and finish out, I guess, all these vacant lots and commercial lots and what have you. What's gonna happen also is you're gonna see a lot of people that wanna start tearing down homes and start building bigger, and that, and that, of course, just increases the overall footprint and is changing the residential landscape. So I think it's just a matter of being smart about it, not necessarily squashing individual development, but making sure that as we go through a different change in, I guess, this island and where it's going, that we continue to follow that plan accordingly.
Thanks, Tim. So Jason, you've stated support for living shorelines in the past. So for viewers, can you make the distinction for us between living and hardened shorelines and why you believe that living shorelines are better?
Now, I know that everybody watching an SCCF broadcast knows exactly the difference, but I will entertain that.
No guarantee.
At Michelle Harbor, you're looking at seawall, concrete seawall, which is an issue of pithin moment because the planning commission is looking at the issue of replacing those seawalls by extending them out a foot. Staff is opposing it currently because it's another, it adds and accretes unnaturally soil to land. A living shoreline has the same effect where you have a hardened structure, but the structure is actually more like a bonsai tree growing out of a rock. It protects native wildlife, or vegetation in this case, and holds it safe on the shoreline for long enough to really dig in, set its roots, just like the mangroves we have all the way around. During that time period, it grows out. It also provides nesting areas. It provides littoral planting, if you will, technically that's for a lake, shoreline planting, if you will, for the coast. So not only do you not sort of see that it's a seawall, it provides a wildlife habitat that covers up. And once it grows out of these sort of, and James Evans, who works with you, is my hero when it comes to living shorelines, and was the one that went, tried everything, and went through the repeated tests of the lighthouse with a couple of failures we had, trying to get this activity right, and looking around the state, the success they've had in replacing seawalls with living shorelines, especially in canal areas where you're never going to get any growth because, one, everybody clips it back if something starts to pop out. I'd like to see that considered for down the road, where we take areas of land, retract the seawall back enough to put in, you know, usually it's a sewer pipe about yay big that you set into the ground, and then you put your mangrove seeds inside it. You get oysters for clean the water, again, going back to the artificial resists. It just looks nicer, leaving aside all the multitudinous benefits.
Thanks, Jason. So John, you spoke about the Sanibel City Vulnerability Study. So now that we've joined the Regional Resiliency Compact, what next steps would you take to follow up on the study to make Sanibel more resilient to the impacts of climate change and sea level rise?
Well, clearly, we need to work with our partners in this effort, because it's gonna take a multitude of resources as well as agencies to sort of figure out what can we do and what the timing of all that is so that we can begin to build. One of the things that I think. This opportunity is, we've gotta educate our public. Right now, there's a lot of naysayers out there. It's way down the road. No, it's not way down the road. It's at our front door, right at our shoreline, and we need to take some action. So communications, I know we had a meeting in February of 2020, the plan or the feasibility study, or the study was done in September or 19. We need now to rekindle that effort, work with our partners, and to educate all of our residents, not only on Sanibel, but also in the entire Kalusahatchi estuary.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. So the following question will be for all of you. This past year, Sanibel experienced 100-year storm event. What policies are needed to minimize the impact of flooding to residential areas? And how might those policies impact wildlife habitat or water quality? And you have up to two minutes to answer, and this time we'll start with you, Mary.
Can you repeat that?
Absolutely. So we experienced a 100-year storm event this last year. What policies are needed to minimize the impact of flooding to residential areas? And how might those policies impact wildlife habitat or water quality?
Right. So we have a lot of areas on the island that are being affected, on the east end, I know up on Jamaica, I know we had the Santiva area which was affected, but we were able to do some restoration there. So I think, you know, we have the protection of the mangroves that kind of support that. And on the shoreline, you know, we're gonna have the beach erosion, so using more dunes, more green to protect. So, you know, that's, you know, we're just gonna have to keep working forward. We're gonna have to work with our experts. We're gonna have to get scientific facts about it, and hopefully, you know, redirect sand, whatever needs to be done. But, you know, I would rely, because I'm not an expert on that, to people out there and get as much resources as I could to be better educated on it, so I can make really good decisions for the council.
Thank you, Mary. Mike, onto you.
Well, proper water management of the interior wetlands are very important for wildlife. So that's. The task. Still maintaining the general principle of keeping the wetlands in the interior of the island properly hydrated for our wildlife.
Thanks, Mike. Jason?
Boy, it's a dramatic situation. I spent about 14 hours out that night and watched the island literally sink. I mean, it was an extraordinary situation. I mean, my memory of that night, though, was making kids, "Don't try this at home." I stupidly chased that waterspout that went from the lighthouse all the way down to the west end, in and out, to see where it was finally, so I could report back where it was coming in, until I realized it was heading for my own house, and then went home. You know, it used to be that there were pipes, sorry, egress pipes, if you will, for floodwaters of that nature throughout the island. A place of particular note was Tahiti, where it used, everybody used to sit on the pipe, and the water in that neighborhood would literally flood straight out of the gulf. Statutory changes since then, advice in the DEP has changed. We're not ejecting out that water as we did. But when you get to a 100-year event, you know, one of the things that I think has to be considered is, if it's a bloody emergency and people are losing everything, you have to think about ways to evacuate water in that singular situation, not operating every day that way, but in ways that people can get immediate access to relief by relieving the water from the inside, because it's not 100% good to flood every garden, get every bit of fertilizer we possibly can, and then run it all into the Sanibel slough. This is something that has to be thought about, because I would warrant that this will not be the only one. If we all live for 100 years, I am quite certain we are going to see a rain event like that again, and I would like to see some manner of action planned to alleviate those neighborhoods that sank, and there is no other way of putting it. And some of that is of our own making. Do we need to start thinking about, is addressing sea level rise? Do we need to start thinking now about raising roads? Do we need to think about saying lot levels need to start coming up? Because if the water's coming up, the land is going to have to come up. We cannot harden, put seawalls all the way around Sanibel. We have to look to the future and work it into our development code.
Thanks, Jason. John?
Well, the issue is whether the water's coming from the skies in the rain, or is it coming from seawater. In respect to the skies, in respect to the rain, we're gonna have those, that's just gonna be a way of life, that's the norm now. How often yet to be determined, but we do have to find ways to contain the water where it's appropriate and distribute the water so it does not flood homes and properties that weren't designed to retain water, or weren't part of the wetlands that provide habitat for our species on this island. The other piece is shoreline. Obviously, it was already mentioned, we need to continue with our dune. To increase the size of our dunes to the extent we can, make sure at least we don't destroy the habitat around those dunes. And I know there are some areas on the island where we do have issues. What we did at Blind Pass, I think, was the only thing we knew what to do at the time. So in some cases, we're gonna have to put up seawalls to preserve access, means of access in and out of Captiva. So it's gonna be a very, it is a very complicated issue. It's gonna vary on what kind of circumstance, whether it's a rain event, or is it a hurricane. I think we did wise choice in respect to vegetation and the Australian pines to make sure if there is a wind event, we sustain that wind event, we minimize the damage on our property, access to the island, and damage to our habitats.
Thank you, John. Tim, same question.
Yep, well, I acknowledge this is a 100-year event, and like Jason said, it might not happen again, but it's gonna happen again within 100 years. But I think what this did is it exposed our weak areas of the island. A lot of those weak areas, I look at it from in the residential side of things, right? So I live in the dunes, and even with a regular, strong thunderstorm, that's not a 100-year event, we have questionable areas where water pools, water's there. So I think we have to also look at maintenance of our current storm-water runoff systems. I mean, the culvert underneath my driveway was clogged. It's now not clogged. That water goes to the drain, and so it doesn't flood anymore. We've all gone through neighborhoods where we see that there's localized type of flooding. So maintenance of our existing, you know, our existing infrastructure, I think, is key. And then you look at future development. I think I kind of touched on this before, and you've got a 50-year-old house that was built way down here, and then brand-new, you've got somebody that's up here. So that stuff that we can manage on a, I guess, more short-term basis and just being cognizant of it going forward. But then you also look at the. We talked about end of Dixie Beach, we've talked about end of Bailey Road. Those areas flood every summer. So what can be done about that? Is it a matter of berming a little bit better so that water stays where it's supposed to and not come onto the roadways? There's a lot of things to take into account, but a lot of it comes down to maintenance as well, I believe.
Thanks, Tim, and I hope everyone could hear over the helicopter, one of the dangers of doing this outside. So Scott, onto you.
Yeah, just for everybody watching at home and listening at home, the talking about is last summer, we had a 100-year rain event, and if you're not here in the summer, you might not be aware of how bad it was, but it was bad. And as Tim alluded to, areas like Bailey Road and Dixie Beach, there were fish swimming across the road, and that's not entirely unusual. This was a 100-year event, but in 2017, about a week prior to Harvey that flooded Houston, we had a rain event that was, maybe it was a 50-year flood event, but I'll tell you, it was darn close to this one. So this is gonna be happening with increasing frequency, there's no question. Global warming is real, and everything has to be recalibrated. The roads in particular to preserve access in places like Dixie Beach and Bailey Road, the next time they repave, we might need to survey and just make them not strip away the pavement, but just build right on top of what we've got, because you do need to have access to homes for safety, for ambulances, for fire, in order for those homes to remain So I think we need to recognize that there are weak areas. The coastal vulnerability study that came out in 2019 was very helpful. It showed a lot of profiles of the beaches and the dunes, and basically, an elevation survey of the entire island. One of the conclusions was the backside of the island, the bay side, might be more vulnerable than the beach side, because a lot of the beach side is higher than the interior and posterior parts of the island. Following up on that and identifying specific areas is really important in the future.
Thanks, Scott. So this will be the last round of specific questions, and you have up to two minutes to respond to these. John, you've said that you intend on committing as much time as possible to improving water quality. The state recently took over wetland permitting responsibilities from the federal government under the Clean Water Act. Many environmental groups, including SCCF, have opposed this move. Do you agree or disagree with this move and why?
I recognize why the state is doing this, why they're trying to take over the permitting issues, because of the unequalness applied across the state, and state governments typically want to try to standardize it and make it uniform across the entire state. I think it is wrong to do that, at least from our standpoint, because we have more flexibility, we have a special interest in the outcome. We have a special desire for a specific outcome that may not be the same desire in Miami-Dade County or in other counties. So I think it is wrong for the state to consider this. I wish it was not the case. I'm not sure what avenues we have to prevent this from happening, but I think it ought to be left to the jurisdictions which are impacted by the permitting authorities.
Thank you, John. Tim, you've hinted at some of this, but let's ask specifically, you've acknowledged the threats of climate change and sea level rise, and you know the average surface elevation of Sanibel is approximately 4 and 1/2 feet. So what specific policies and actions will you support to address rising sea levels and storm surge here on Sanibel?
Well, we've, I think it's a group effort, meaning that we all agree that it's happening, and I think everybody that's gonna be on council is gonna recognize that it's gonna happen. So any type of policies that are put forward need to recognize that and need to take into account that we have to protect not only ourselves now, but what's gonna happen to the island decades from now. So we've talked about, you know, naturally anchoring our shorelines, and if the backside of the island is more vulnerable than the front side, just simply to our makeup, then that's where we need to, you know, concentrate our efforts. I guess we're fortunate in the fact that a lot of the backside of our island is already natural, with Ding Darling, with Tarpon Bay, et cetera. So maybe those efforts need to be concentrated on those areas first and prioritize where our weaknesses are. So absolutely, and all for it, and it's just a matter of making sure that we're educated and monitor everything going forward so we make the right decisions.
Appreciate it. Scott, you have expressed support just even tonight for a ban on gas leaf blowers. What specifically would you do as a council member to advance this initiative, and also, why is this an important initiative?
Well, I think it's a quality-of-life issue. Noise is a problem. Yes, air pollution is also a problem. A lot of them are two-stroke engines that are dirty and pollute, but noise pollution is a problem. And, you know, in America, your rights stop when they start to infringe upon my rights. And so if I'm sitting at home trying to peacefully read a book, and I'm subject to this loud noise that carries across the entire neighborhood, I'm not sure that that's entirely fair to me and to the individual. So a lot of localities in Florida and across the country have already tackled this issue. So if you're gonna write an ordinance, you just need to read their ordinances and study them. City of Naples, Key Biscayne, Palm Beach, numerous places in California, it's pretty easy to find the wording and the manner of implementing this. Obviously, there has to be a phase-in period. We have to look at whether the electric products, which have improved greatly in the last couple of years since this idea was, first came to council, and there were limitations placed and so forth, but the technology has improved. We have to look at these electric products and see, do they meet the landscaper's needs? And the answer is maybe, in which case, individuals could simply be required to purchase a leafblower for a couple hundred bucks that their landscaper uses for 15 minutes, because the big issue is the battery and how long it's gonna last. So it is, we have to look carefully at the practicality of this, but I've already bought an electric leaf blower for my landscaper to use, and I think that is a perfectly reasonable compromise.
Thanks, Scott. Mary, you have spoken about supporting the need for reasonable, sorry, responsible development. What does responsible development look like for you?
Responsible development? So I think that when we look at how we're developing things, it's very important to stick with our city plan and with our rules and regulations, and, you know, just really take heed to, you know, I think we talked a little bit about, you know, they're taking the smaller houses, they're making the McMansions, you know, and we wanna probably take a look at that, and we want to control it, and we wanna keep our island as unique as it is and as the way it is for the future generations to come.
Thanks, Mary. Mike, you've talked about Red Tide and its negative effects on our community. The city has a Red Tide cleanup policy, which dictates minimally invasive ways to clean up our beaches. However, some community members support full-scale mechanical raking of our beaches during these events. In light of the negative impacts to wildlife and their habitats, would you support mechanical raking?
No, I wouldn't, and that's not the way to solve the problem. I mean, the problem is caused by, or certainly fueled by, excess nutrients coming from Lake Okochobee and down to Kalusahatchee, and that's the problem we have to deal with. But mechanical raking on our beaches hurts wildlife, it's violative of the Sanibel plan. I would not support it at all.
Thank you, Mike. Jason, you've mentioned you would support modifying some development restrictions on residential property to allow for amenities such as swimming pools. residential property to allow for amenities such as swimming pools where they currently would exceed development coverage. Do you believe similar exceptions would apply to development in wetlands?
No, and to tell you the truth, and I think I specifically stated that the rights-of-way on Sanibel are platted as four-lane highways everywhere. Go down to Kincaid, you have a single dirt road. It's actually plotted out for four lanes, which will never be made. And if those areas, the right-of-ways, aren't taken into the calculations for the house. Now, this sort of ties into the idea of, I would look at the Sanibel plan and look to the human support systems and say, are we addressing the needs of young families to come to Sanibel? Or are we distilling ourselves down to a particular group that will not be stewards for the long run, that people won't grow up here? That was the best thing for me, to keep an eye on the environment, to care about it. I want that same thing to be guaranteed for the future. Now, I may be the young, I was the youngest when I was eight, four years ago, and I'm amazingly still the youngest now, but my kid is still in the system. I know lots of families, and I recruit as many as I can to come out and say, come out. And they're saying, well, we can only afford this house, and 20% of the space that we could use is a road that will never be built. Now, that is keeping out of our own market the very lifeblood. My suggestion was, I mean, most families need a free wet babysitter, which the old swimming pool was. Look at these houses, they're grass yards that have been there since the '60s, and there's nothing ever there. But they can't put in a small pool for the kids to play in because 20%, 25% of their land is to be tarmac'd at some point in the future? I just don't think that's fair. I think the protections for wetlands are well-established, setbacks are well-established. That comes into play. Those density issues are well-established. We've got to get families out here, and we've got to find new ways to do it.
Thanks, Jason. So we have made it to our final question here that everyone will be able to respond to, and this is slightly different, but I think something that will allow you to think creatively. Traffic on Sanibel is an issue for humans and wildlife. In many places, public transportation has been proven to reduce traffic congestion and carbon emissions. So if money is no object, would you support some type of public transportation on Sanibel? And what would it look like? You have up to one minute to answer this question, and we will start with you, Mike.
We've looked at that before. It doesn't work very well on Sanibel, except maybe in very limited form. You don't have a central area to take people to, to and from, so that's a problem. You've got varying work schedules on the part of employees, so that's a problem. Different tourist destinations. So, I mean, there may be some limited opportunity for off-island parking and a shuttle to someplace on Sanibel, but I think it would be very problematic. It's probably not an effective solution.
All right, Jason, same to you.
Now, listen, I wish it was the case that we could wave a magic wand, have electric trams going up and down the road here, ding ding, we all jump. It won't work out here, as simple as that. And the limited opportunities we've had, the federal government runs its bus, as it were, well, it's a licensee runs the parking lot, but that's because they have too many people coming and they don't want to take over more real estate around the center there. Looking down the road for me, the other problem is, is then you start to encourage something that we've stood against, and that is allowing tour buses to bring large volumes of people out here merely for the purposes of dumping them off in places to spend the day and coming around. You get into a situation of, if it's all right for us to fill buses full of people for us, why is it not all right to fill buses full of people from everywhere and bring them onto the island? I think at the end of the day, it'll exasperate it. And frankly, with COVID on this island, I don't think putting everybody into buses and driving them around the place in close quarters is the best idea.
John?
Well, that question has been asked, and the answers are pretty much consistent. We have a traffic issue, and we're going to have a traffic issue. Now, what can we do to sort of ease it a little bit? Certainly, I would like to see some sort of way to move people on and off the island without the emissions, without having large vehicles coming onboard, but I think we have to live with what we've got. I think we can try, obviously, and we have, and we need to continue to try, to find people ways to get them on and off the island at different times, whether it's different times of the day, different times of season, or different seasons. Explore ways to have events off-season so that we distribute the water. But this is going to be, this is a problem we've had, and it's going to continue to be a problem. We need to be creative.
Thanks, John. Tim?
Yeah, I don't see how public transportation's going to work on the island. Everybody's already said it, that I can't see it either. We look over to our friends in Fort Myers Beach, you know, they've got the public transportation. They have an off-site, large off-site facility for the large buses. They've got a bus schedule. That's a whole different animal over there. Even if that could be put in place here, how many people would actually use it? I mean, the people that come out here, they want to go to all these different places, you know, Ding Darling, all the way up to Captiva. I just don't see how that would work in the footprint of what we already have here. So yes, the traffic situation's here, it's not going anywhere, and I think it's just that large pill we have to swallow for being out here and anybody that visits here. You can mitigate it, but it's not going anywhere.
Thank you, Tim. Scott?
Yeah, the studies showed and the surveys showed that about 2/3 of the cars coming across the causeway were people just coming for the day. And a lot of those people coming for the day surprisingly had no plan. So they were just coming out to just to look around, and that definitely contributes to the traffic problem. So some campaign with the Chamber of Commerce to educate people to make a plan so you're not stuck in traffic and you're not suffering and miserable at 4:30 sitting on Periwinkle. Nobody really wants that. So I do think making a plan and educating people is helpful. I think obviously spreading out the traffic in the evening is helpful, and working with the Chamber to incentivize people to stay for dinner would be helpful. In an ideal world, we'd have some form of park-and-ride for workers on the island. We do have some of that going to Captiva with vans of workers, and expanding that would be great if you had an unlimited budget and you had a place to actually build the park-and-ride.
Thanks, Scott. Mary?
Yeah, being here so, as long as I have, traffic has always been the biggest issue. And I don't think public transportation system on Sanibel now with the infrastructure that we have will ever work. But moving forward into the future, maybe we can become the Jensen's, you know, and have little vehicles that just pop up and bring us and drop us off and, but no, I mean, traffic is my idea of traffic. I told you in previous forums that to get the traffic off the island, you know, we need to work with Lee County and the bridges and the two islands and get two lanes off this island so when you hit the first bridge, you could have two cars go onto the first bridge and remain into Summerlin Road with two lanes. So that's the way I think you could eliminate the evening traffic. So, but I think we're a beautiful destination. People come here, they read about us, they hear about us, they're going to come. And with a plan or without a plan, we have a beautiful Chamber of Commerce where they can stop and make a plan with all the technology we have there. So I think traffic is in our future forever.
Thank you, Mary. Well, this concludes the questions section of our forum tonight. To finish up, I'd like you to give a brief one-minute statement about why our viewers should vote for you, and we will start with you, Jason Mann.
I appreciate that, Ryan. I've enjoyed the last four years working with the city council, and I feel in a team play with four others, we've accomplished a lot of important things, from budget to the environment, to working together to deal with COVID, to deal with hurricanes, to deal with all the things that are affecting us. I like to serve because I owe the island for raising me and taking me in. The things that we talk about here are things that I do every day. It's my career. Coastal resiliency projects, I've got three that I'm working on today on the island. Budget issues, I go line by line through the contracts to make these things. I understand what's involved in it, and I just tell you what I think. It is, quote, "the straight dope" that I'm going to share with you as an elected official, and I'll continue to do that. But like I said at the start, you have to live Sanibel. It's not just an idea, it's working for Sanibel when nobody's around to see it that really matters.
Thank you. Jason. John Hentchel?
I love Sanibel and the principles that developed and made Sanibel what it is today, which is the Sanibel Plan. I'm deeply concerned about our water quality. The COVID issue, I consult on COVID now, and the issue around protecting our citizens, our workers, and our visitors is important, but water quality is going to be our number one issue. That's my background in environmental safety and health, and I'm committed to doing whatever I can, either on city council or other avenues, to work with the city officials, all the council members, as well as Lee County, the state, and folks in Tallahassee, to make sure that we get the right funding necessary to continue the governor's efforts on those 29 projects, to make sure that we improve our watershed, the quality of our watershed, and water moving south.
Thank you, John. Tim Drobnik?
Well, first off, I want to say that I'm very appreciative of being here tonight. I have enjoyed the forums that we've had over the last couple of weeks, and I particularly enjoyed this one the best primarily because I can see everybody face-to-face, eye-to-eye. This is how I operate. I'm not a politician. I don't pretend to be a politician, and I don't pretend to be an expert in any one of the topics that we've talked about over the last month. But I'm informed. I care deeply about this community and the people that are part of this community, and that's where I want to focus on in addition to our environment, but focus on the people and connect the city to the people. Again, not a politician, but I've got a good head on my shoulders. I have a hard time self-advocating, but I'm glad I'm here and looking forward to serve if I get the opportunity.
Thank you, Tim. Dr. Scott Crater?
Yes, a couple things. First of all, I don't have any interest in running for any office outside of Sanibel Island. This is it for me. So if I'm elected, I will serve and I will enjoy it immensely, but that's it for me. This is as far in politics as I would ever want to go as this nonpartisan city council race. Secondly, I don't have any business interests on Sanibel Island. I have real no conflict, I have no conflicts of interest. I'm just a resident. I own my house and the lot next door, and that's it. Third, I would say that I'm passionate about the environment. I've been a Sierra Club member since long before I moved to Sanibel, and I think that the environment is the economy for Sanibel. Lastly, I'd say I have a scientific background. I love science, like John, and I enjoyed immensely the presentation on the Jordan Marsh at the city council meeting last week. And these are the kind of things that motivate me to want to be on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Bonra?
Yes, well, everybody knows I love Sanibel. I just am passionate, I am dedicated, I give my time to Sanibel. I think that I have, over the last 24 years, having, being a mom, coming onto this island with two small children and raising them through the schools, getting involved in numerous activities with nonprofits, serving on awards, becoming the founder of Let's Pink Out to help support people with cancer-related needs. I just think that I'm a people person. I would love to listen to the people. I would like to bring that to city council. I want to be open, I'm available to talk, I'm still young, and I have a lot of energy, and I just love the island, and I would love to serve the people of Sanibel. And I would love to serve with any one of these five gentlemen and the two that are sitting on city council. I think a good teamwork, and I'm a team player, and I'm happy to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mike Miller?
So for years, Kevin Ruane provided guidance and counsel to the city in financial matters, but he's moved on to the county now, and his departure creates a void. With my background as a former CPA and as, over two decades of experience as a financial executive, I can help fill that void. I've also have considerable experience as an attorney, problem-solving in complex environments of statutory and regulatory complexity. I've been in leadership roles in several Sanibel civic organizations. I frequently attend, I'm a frequent attendee at council meetings. I understand Sanibel's problems. I'm fully retired. I have the time and energy to devote to Sanibel issues, and I would welcome your vote.
Thank you, Mike. I want to thank our candidates for an engaging forum, but also for their willingness to serve our community. City council members are unpaid, dedicated public servants, and we're indeed lucky to have such an impressive slate of candidates. So remember that Lee County Supervisor of Elections is suggesting that you post your mail-in ballots no later than February 20th, but they also will accept them until 6:59 PM on Election Day. February 20th is also the last day to request a vote-by-mail ballot, and if you haven't yet received yours. So please visit lee.vote for further details. So thank you to the viewers, thank you to our supporters, and thank you to our entire production team. Good night. Well, before I say good night, I do want to say this, that we are told that there was some internet issue with Comcast. Please stay tuned. The entire recording will be available to you on our website until Election Day, March 2nd. So good night and stay safe.
Oh, is that the bumper music?